I would like to call to order the September 20th, 2021 Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners Regular Meeting. Welcome everyone. Wanted to give a little information before we get started. This Board of Commissioners meeting is being broadcast live on Channel 22, on Cabarrus County YouTube, and also live on the Cabarrus County website. If you would like to participate during informal public comments, or to speak on one of the public hearings, you may email your name, address, and telephone number to publiccomment@cabarruscounty.us, or you may call 980-729-7943. And the PIN number for that, and I'll repeat this because it's kind of long tonight, is 223-833-660, followed by the pound sign. Once again, that email address is publiccomment@cabarruscounty.us. Or you may call 980-729-7943, and use the PIN number 223-833-660, followed by the pound sign. And we will repeat those instructions when we get to that section of the agenda also. We are very happy to have with us tonight Pastor Carol Karkin from Central United Methodist Church to bring our invocation. Welcome Pastor Karkin. We appreciate you being here. And I think you're muted still.
I just unmuted. Thank you very much, Steve. Let's pray. God, I thank you so much for our county commissioners, for all that they do to serve our area, especially in such challenging times. God, we pray that they might be equipped with what they need. We thank you for all of those civil servants hard at work, for county managers, for people who do budgets, who figure out tax stuff, who manage our safety and public works, who make sure that all citizens have what they need in these strange times of isolation and trying to reopen and rebuild while the threat of COVID is still at large. God, we pray that you might knit our community back together, that we might continue to innovate and find ways to be connected despite the ways that we need to sometimes quarantine and isolate. Thank you for the gift of technology that allows us to continue in this work and to bring people together, even in times like this. We thank you that your hand stays upon us and guide us into the future you would envision for Cabarrus County. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Reverend Karkin. We very much appreciate you joining us tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, first up is the approval or correction of the minutes, and all of you have a copy of that before you. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes as presented, or to make any corrections that are necessary.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Schu, a second by Commissioner Honeycutt to approve the minutes as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. And that motion passes unanimously. Next up is the approval of the agenda, and you all have a copy of that before you as well. So at this time, do I hear a motion to approve the meeting agenda, including the changes on page 52?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Honeycutt, a second by Commissioner Schu to approve the meeting agenda, including the changes on page 52. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. That motion passes. And we move now to recognition and presentation. We are very happy to have with us tonight Sandra Torres to present a proclamation on Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month. Welcome Sandra.
Hi, thank you. You guys read the proclamation? Are you going to read it?
I will be happy to read it, or if you would like to, with your choice.
If I read it, it's gonna take like 25 years, so it's better if you read it. Thank you.
Okay, well, 25 years, I'm not sure I got 25 years available, so I'll be happy to do that. This Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month proclamation. Whereas Cabarrus County is proud to be home to nearly 23,000 community members of Hispanic and Latino descent, and whereas Hispanic and Latino community members enrich our communities by sharing their vibrant culture and heritage, and whereas in September 1968, Congress authorized President Lyndon B. Johnson to proclaim National Hispanic Heritage Week, and whereas his celebration was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 to cover a 30-day period starting on September 15th and ending on October 15th. And whereas the United States Congress and the White House call for all Americans to observe this month appropriately, and whereas Cabarrus County will join with the rest of the country in recognizing the National Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month by commemorating essential contributions, sacrifices, and accomplishments that Hispanic and Latino people have made to the United States throughout history. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners do hereby recognize September 15th through October 15th, 2020, as Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month. Commissioners, do I hear a motion that we adopt this proclamation?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Keiger, a second by Commissioner Honeycutt. Is there any discussion? Sandra, is there anything that you would like to say before we vote?
I just want to say thank you as usual for all the support that you guys have given the Latino community and El Puente Hispano. I'm always grateful, and just thank you.
Great, thank you.
Chairman Morris, that was Commissioner Strang who seconded.
Okay, I'm sorry, the clerk can make that correction on the minutes. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you Sandra for being with us tonight.
Thank you.
Next, we move to the retirement recognition from the Sheriff's Office, and I've got down Sheriff Shaw here, but, or Chief Deputy Bailey, who's gonna handle that one.
You are stuck with me tonight, so.
Okay.
No, I wanted to make sure that we got this done this month. Sergeant Dean Vernon retired from our agency actually last month, and I just wanted to go over a brief synopsis of his career, just for the board and for those that are listening tonight, so thank you for having us. On October the 15th, 1994, Sheriff Robert Kennedy hired Dean as a new deputy sheriff, and he attended the Rowan Cabarrus Community College Basic Law Enforcement Program. He completed this training and was awarded certification by the North Carolina Criminal Justice Education Standards Commission in November of 1994. His classmates at that time selected him the most outstanding student in their graduating class, so he already got started off on a good note. After graduating from BLET, he was assigned to our Communications Division and remained there until November of 1997, at which time assigned to patrol. And he stayed on patrol until January of 1999. In January 1999, he left us and accepted a position as a special agent with the United States Secret Service, and was assigned to their Philadelphia Field Office until February of 2002, when he decided and made a good call to come back to Cabarrus County and start his career over again with us. So February 2002, Sheriff Brad Riley rehired him to the Patrol Division, and he stayed there until March of 2003. In March of 2003, Sheriff Riley promoted Dean to the Criminal Investigations Division, where he was initially assigned to working sexual assault cases involving juvenile crimes. So it's one of our hardest probably criminal investigations assignments to work, takes a toll on you. So he did that until June of 2009, when he was assigned to the Youth Development Division as a School Resource Officer, and at that time was assigned to Northwest Cabarrus High School, and he stayed there until June of 2013. At that time Sheriff Riley promoted Dean to the rank of sergeant in the Youth Development Division, and he maintained that position until he retired. In March of 2015, he completed the Public Safety Leadership Institute class through Central Piedmont Community College. On September the 4th, 2015, he received his Advanced Law Enforcement Certificate from the North Carolina Education Standards Commission. As a recipient of this, Dean has achieved the highest award given in the state for North Carolina law enforcement officers. So during his career, he's been assigned to some additional capacities. He was on the Honor Guard for five years, the Special Response Team, our SWAT Team, he was on that team for 17 years, which is very physically demanding. 2013 through 2018, he was assigned to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Committee for Cabarrus County. For five years, 2015 to 2020, he was assigned to the North Carolina Association of School Resource Officers as a board member. He was also, from 2016 to 2020, he was the Cabarrus County Law Enforcement Memorial Day Coordinator. For 18 years, which I don't know how he lasted that long, he supervised the Concord Mills Off Duty Assignment for the Sheriff's Office. 2015 till now, he was a Fraternal Order of Police Concord Lodge Vice President. He was a member of that lodge for five years, and he's Vice President for two of those. He was also on our Racial Diversity Group Panel for the Sheriff's Office. He's also achieved, he was voted Outstanding Officer of the Year for his division in 2012. 2014, he received the Impact Through Education Award from the Cabarrus County School System. 2019, in October, he received the Officer of the Year Award from Cannon Memorial Lodge in Kannapolis. And Dean is a 1989 graduate of Pfeiffer College with a bachelor's degree in sports management and a minor in economics. We are sorely gonna miss him. He did such a fabulous job in coordinating our school resource officers. You know, it's big shoes to fill, but I know Dean's excited. He's worked a tremendous amount of extra hours, spent a lot of time away from his family, so I know his wife Lisa is probably happy to have him home. Well, maybe she's happy to have him home, I hope she is. But again, we're very excited for Dean, and we're happy that he's made it to the end. So I see Dean's on here, so Dean, if you'd like to say anything to the board?
Thank you Chief. Just personally, there's so many of you on the board that I've known over the years and had a chance to meet. Barbara, of course, your son at Northwest when I was there. Steve, I could go on and on. Mike Downs was at Pfeiffer graduating as I was going in to school, but a lot of fine memories. I've just enjoyed the opportunity to serve the county and the relationships. I guess that's the biggest thing I'm gonna miss on a daily basis, is that interaction every day going to work with so many people that work very hard to make this county a safe and productive place to live. But from the bottom of my heart, thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity to have worked for the county all of these years and for the Sheriff's Office.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much Chief Bailey for that presentation. I got tired listening to all of those accomplishments. It's just amazing, and if I did not know Dean personally and have had the opportunity to work with him, we served together on the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council for a number of years, and I certainly got to see his heart for the young people in this community. I think our School Resource Officer Program under his direction is a model in the state, and it's something that we brag about anytime that we're in other parts of the state. So Dean, congratulations. You will definitely be missed in your role, but we are, have my fingers crossed, you're gonna continue to be a Cabarrus County resident, and we're proud of that as well, but I certainly wanna extend best wishes to you and your retirement, and thank you for everything that you have done for us. And we will give you a virtual round of applause. Sorry, we can't be together in person, but thank you very much. You truly, truly are appreciated. Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments they'd like to make before we move on? Great, well, thank you. And so we move now to informal public comments. Repeat the message that I gave at the beginning of the meeting. For public comments during informal public comments, or during our public hearings, please email your name and address and telephone number to publiccomment@cabarruscounty.us. You may also use the conference call number 980-729-7943, and the PIN number 223-833-660, followed by the pound sign. And I will repeat that one more time. The email address is publiccomment@cabarruscounty.us, and you may also use the conference call number 980-729-7943, and the PIN number 223-833-660, followed by the pound sign. That same number will work for the public hearings that we'll have just a little later in the meeting as well. So at this time, I'd like to call on our clerk Lauren Linker to give us a report of any email requests that she may have received, or if she has anybody on the conference call line.
I currently have not received any emails, and at this time, there's no one on the conference line.
Okay, thank you. We will proceed on with our agenda. Should we hear from somebody that had difficulty getting through, we'll certainly try to accommodate them later in the meeting if necessary. So next up is our consent agenda. As everyone is aware, these are all items that we discussed in depth at our work session two weeks ago, and I've now been included on our consent agenda. So at this time, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I think that was by Commissioner Keiger, with a second by Commissioner Honeycutt. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. That motion passes unanimously. And for the benefit of our viewing public, that was 16 different items that we discussed at a fairly lengthy work session meeting two weeks ago. So now we will move to new business. First up is from Department of Human Services Fiscal Year 23, 5311 Community Transportation Grant. This does require a public hearing, and prior to that, I would like to call on Bob Bushy from our Transportation Department to make any comments he might want to make regarding this item before we open the public hearing.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. FY 235311 grant will cover $176,488 in administrative cost, $560,680 to replace eight vehicles, with a total local match for those grants of $82,541.20.
Excellent. Does anybody have questions for Mr. Bushy? This is also an item that we've discussed previously as well, and is, as I mentioned, this does call for a public hearing. So at this time, I will open the public hearing. The same instructions apply for these. We actually have four public hearings in a row, so I'm gonna read these instructions one more time to apply for all four of those public hearings. For public comments during our public hearing, please email your name, address, and telephone number to publiccomment@cabarruscounty.us. You may also use the conference call number 980-729-7943, with the PIN number 223-833-660, followed by the pound sign. And at this time, I will call on our clerk to let us know if we have any emails or calls waiting.
Again, I have not received any emails at this time, and it does not look to have anyone in our conference line.
Great, thank you Lauren. Okay, with there being no one here to speak, I will now close the public hearing. And Commissioners, I would entertain a motion to accept the fiscal year 23, 5311 Community Transportation Administrative and Capital Grant and the related resolutions.
So moved. I'll move for approval.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Strang, a second by Commissioner Schu to approve that grant. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. And that motion passes unanimously. And we move now to a public hearing for an economic development investment, and we are happy to have Chanel Varner with us to talk about that prior to the public hearing.
Good evening. I'm Chanel Varner, Program Manager for Cabarrus Economic Development. Thank you for the opportunity to present Project Tape, also known as Intertape Polymer Corporation. Intertape Polymer Corporation is an advanced manufacturer of protective packing products. They're proposing an expansion project at their plant on Bill McKee Road in Midland. The projected investment is approximately 49.3 million in real and property, real and personal property. They also plan to create 25 jobs with average wages above our current county average wage. The Cabarrus County grant analysis is based on the estimated 49.3 million projected investment in real and personal property. We are asking for your consideration of a three-year, 85% economic development grant. The estimated grant for the three-year term is $627,572. The net revenue to the county during that term is $110,748. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you Chanel. Do any of the Commissioners have questions for Chanel?
Yeah, Chanel, can you just repeat the number that you just gave us, the net taxes to the county? Okay, the reason I was, my ear wasn't agreeing with my eyes, and I could see that number, and it did not sound like that's what you said, so I just wanted to check. Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions or comments Commissioners? Okay, we will now open the public hearing to receive comments on this proposal, and I will once again call on Lauren, our clerk, to give us a report of any emails or persons that might be on the conference line.
I've not received any emails concerning this public hearing, and we do not have anyone on the conference line.
Okay, thank you very much. I will say, and certainly we can open this up for comment, first, I would entertain a motion to approve an economic development agreement, three years, 85%, between Intertape Polymer Corporation and Cabarrus County, and to authorize the county manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the board, subject to review or revision by the county attorney.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Honeycutt, a second from Commissioner Keiger to approve this economic development agreement. I now now open the floor for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I think, and Chanel, you can expand on this, I believe this is the group that makes tape for Amazon, is that correct?
That is correct.
Yes.
Yeah, we are, I am certainly very excited to see them expand here in Cabarrus County. When they, it seems like only yesterday that they began construction of the plant, and it really hasn't been that long, but for them to be expanding this rapidly, I think is very exciting. This is one of the companies that I have used a number of times as an example of how economic development projects in one part of the county benefit everyone in the county. And certainly, when Amazon located in our area, and Intertape Polymer Group is one of their suppliers, looked at Cabarrus County, I feel sure that had a lot to do with it. They located in Midland, adjacent to the Corning Plant, where a rail siding was available. So a project on one opposite side of the county created another project with jobs and investment on the other side of the county. So it is really exciting for them to be prospering and to be ready to expand so quickly. So congratulations to them, and I am certainly in full support of this project. Are there, are there any other comments or any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you Chanel.
Thank you. Good evening.
Okay, and we will move now to, from Planning and Development, the, no, excuse me, we have one more, I'm jumping ahead. We have one more economic development investment, and this is from Stairs Corporation, and Chanel, is it gonna be Chanel or Samantha this time?
Samantha.
Welcome Samantha.
Thank you all. We are happy to be here tonight presenting two projects for your consideration. Thank you for the support for IPG. This is Project Precision, Stairs Corporation. They are proposing to construct a cervical instrument processing facility in the Oakmont Business Park, located at 7885 Poplar Tent Road in in the Oakmont Business Park, located at 7885 Poplar Tent Road in Concord. The operation will provide outsourced surgical instrument reprocessing and instrument repair solutions by certified sterile processing professionals and highly trained repair technicians to customers in the region. The projected investment is estimated to be 19.95 million in real and personal property. They also plan to create 120 new jobs with average wages above our current county average wage. The Cabarrus County Grant Analysis is based on that estimated 19.95 million projected investment in real and personal property. We are asking for your consideration of a three-year, 85% economic development grant. The estimated grant for that three-year term, that three-year grant term, is $348,828. Net revenue to the county during that three-year grant term is over $61,000. Happy to answer any questions that you have. There are two representatives with us this evening, joining virtually from Starris, Dalton Hall and Tony Bertone. They plan to speak during the public comment period and answer any questions about the operations that you may have as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Samantha. Does anyone have any questions for Samantha before we open the public hearing? Okay, hearing none. I'll now open the public hearing and once again call on our clerk, Lauren Linker, for a report on folks that maybe have emailed or are online or in our conference line for comments.
I do not have any emails concerning this public hearing, and I currently do not have anyone in our conference line. So we will just pass it over to the two that are on teams with us in this meeting tonight.
Excellent. Thank you. And so at this time, I will recognize the representatives from Starris that are with us to speak tonight, and welcome both of you.
Well, thank you very much, Commissioners and Administration. And Samantha, thank you for presenting our project for us. My name is Tony Bertone. I'm Director of Global Facilities and Real Estate for Starris Corporation. We have over 330 locations around the world, but we're most excited about this opportunity we have in Concord and Cabarrus County. We currently have approximately 215 employees at five locations in North Carolina today, with an additional 130 on the ground as tech representatives for us in North Carolina. This project will bring 120 more. We're very excited about this. This is a prototype for us, and we're going to kick this off here in North Carolina. We're really looking forward to the partnership and so happy that you've had us here tonight. We actually wish we could join you live. We were looking forward to coming down to North Carolina and spending some time with you, as we did in Concord a few weeks ago, but we understand why we can't. Dolls, would you like to add anything?
Yeah, thanks, Tony. So I'm Dalton Hall, Director of Construction for Starris, and just echo Tony's comments and say thank you for the opportunity to be on the agenda tonight. And I will say that your chamber was beautiful. Your facility was wonderful. So it is a shame we couldn't meet, but hopefully in the future, we'll be there to see you in person.
Great.
Thank you.
We appreciate you being with us tonight. And those are all the comments, I think, that we have in our public hearing. So at this time, I will close the public hearing. And Commissioners, what would be your pleasure on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve an economic development grant, three years, 85% between Starris Corporation and Cabarrus County, and to authorize the county manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the board, subject to review or revision by the county attorney.
Second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Keiger, a second by Commissioner Honeycutt. Is there discussion?
I would just like to say it's exciting to have them online and excited about the new company coming into the area and broadening our diversity of our jobs. So welcome to Cabarrus County.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments?
Well, I'd just like to echo what Commissioner Honeycutt just said. It's nice that you guys took an interest in the meeting and the hearing to come and speak. So, and trust me, we're disappointed that we're not meeting in person as well. It's better when we're together, but we can still do the business of Cabarrus County this way, and we look forward to getting back soon. But thanks again for joining our meeting.
Thank you again.
Okay, any other comments or discussion? I would certainly like to echo, it was a pleasure to have both of you with us tonight. We could, or certainly, I could not agree with you more. Cabarrus County is a great place to be, and anytime you're here, it's a good day. And we are so happy that you have chosen our community to establish a new location in. I think that sometimes we need to stop and pause for a moment and realize how thankful we are that this is such a desirable community. With these two projects we've discussed tonight, we're talking about almost $70 million in new investment in our community, over $161,000 in new tax revenue immediately, while these incentives are still in place. And then certainly, a great deal more in the future, not to mention the jobs provided for our citizens. So we are delighted that you have chosen us and for us to have this opportunity. Any other discussion before we move to a vote? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, please say no. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Okay, great. And we move now to an item from Planning and Development, the 2020-2021 Home Program CAPER Report and the associated public hearing. And before we open that public hearing, we'll hear from Kelly Sifford. Welcome, Kelly.
Thank you. So as a participant of this program, each year we must report to the federal government, sorry, getting a little feedback, on our activities. So as part of that, we have expanded $655,174,286 of revenue. That would be the original allocation and match for the county. And then we also had some program income, which brings our total to 184,686. We are, as we discussed earlier, trying to work out with Concord, being able to construct a new home for affordable housing. If we are unable to carry out that task due to the cost right now, we'll come back to you with an alternate activity. But so far, we've done some advertising for Fair Housing and things like that.
Great. Thank you, Kelly. Does anyone have any questions for Kelly? Okay, hearing none. I will open the public hearing and call again on our clerk, Lauren Linker, to give us a report of any emails or calls that might be waiting.
I currently do not have any emails concerning this public hearing, and it does not look like we have anyone in our conference line.
Thank you, Lauren. This public hearing is for the purpose of presenting the information to the public and does not call for a vote. So at this time, I will close the public hearing, and thank you for that report, Kelly.
Thank you.
Okay, we move now to Item G5. This is our Cabarrus County Recovery Grants Small Business Support Program, and we are delighted to have Deputy County Manager Rodney Harris with us to talk about that item.
Good evening. A few minutes ago, you passed on your consent agenda, our Preliminary American Rescue Plan's spending plan. And one component of that, and a key component of that, is to offer a grant program for small businesses. And so I am happy to report to you that tomorrow, we will launch that application process. It will be open for three weeks through October 15th. And small businesses that are eligible will be able to apply online or via a paper application for up to $10,000 of support. Now, we know and recognize that that is not going to make up all of the losses that our small business community has experienced over the past 18 months. But unfortunately, that is what we can legally do with the money that we are receiving from the federal government. So we think it is a worthwhile investment in our small business community, and we look forward to launching that program tomorrow.
Any questions for Rodney?
Yes, Rodney, just for the viewing audience, what are some of the requirements or stipulations that would allow a small business owner to be able to receive some of those funds?
So this will be targeted at small businesses with 50 or fewer employees and businesses that were in business and in operations prior to January 1st of 2020. So not newer businesses that were started sort of after the pandemic. And then again, this funding is focused on for-profit entities. Our last round of recovery grant funding also included some support for nonprofits, but this program is geared towards for-profit entities.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions for Rodney? And the application process for these businesses, is all, are all of those forms available on our website? Or is that something that they need to visit the governmental center to pick up? Could you just talk a little bit about that?
So immediately, they will be able to access it from our website. So starting tomorrow, they will be able to go to our cabarruscounty.us website and navigate to a specific dedicated page that will have the application, the eligibility criteria, and also a paper form if they want to print that out. Like with prior programs, we'll make the paper application available at county locations. So whether that's libraries, through the Chamber, and through our EDC partnership, and other locations throughout the community.
And you mentioned that that would be open for three weeks. So what is the final deadline, the last day, that those applications can be filed?
Yeah, so the applications will be accepted through October 15th, which is a Friday. And then shortly thereafter, we will begin the review process.
Okay, great. Commissioners, does anyone else have any questions or comments you'd like to make? I think one, what's the total amount of the funds available for this portion of the program?
So for this, we've reserved up to $5 million, which would be up to about 300 organizations or small businesses that we could support.
Right, excellent. Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Rodney. I hope that we will see a lot of response from this program. There truly are a lot of folks that can benefit from it, I think. Okay, we move now to Item G6. This is from Procurement, County Surplus and Disposal. We're happy to have Tom Nun with us to talk about this item.
Good evening, Commissioners. The county wishes to surplus eight vehicles that have served their purpose for the sheriff's office. Under General Statute 160A, 266C, disposal of county personal property must be declared surplus by the governing board. Proper procedures have been followed in order to surplus and dispose of each vehicle. Staff is requesting that these items be declared surplus.
Okay, Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Nun? Okay, Tom, thank you for that report.
Got you. Thank you, sir.
That does require a motion to approve that item.
So I move.
Okay, and I will read that. Motion, Commissioner Strang, motion to declare asset numbers 8374, 8271, 8272, 8344, 8339, 8350, 890, and 8314, surplus property of Cabarrus County and authorize private negotiated sale. Do you approve that motion, Commissioner Strang?
Yeah, sir, I was reading it, and then I said yes, I'll move. So yes, you're good.
Excellent, yeah. So just wanted to get all that on the record. So is, do I hear a second for that motion?
Second.
Okay, that second by Commissioner Keiger. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to, just primarily for the viewing audience, let the viewing audience know when we declare surplus vehicles and that type thing, if there's someone in the public, some entity that would like to purchase this. What would be the process, Tom? Could you tell us that?
Yes, sir, we do offer private negotiations for the purchase of that. And depending on the dollar value, we could have sealed bid offers where somebody would actually submit a bid of what they think the purchase of that vehicle to them would mean.
Okay, well, I mean, I just know that a lot of times there's entities out there that may be nonprofits. They're looking for a vehicle, and you know, these vehicles, just because they've reached their useful life according to the policies that we go by, doesn't mean that they're dead. They can be used more, I'm sure. But the dependability is probably the reason that we do replace these and have them as surplus. But I just want to make sure that everybody that wants to have a shot at a surplus vehicle would know how to do that. So, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion on the floor. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. That motion passes. I wanted to go back and mention one thing on the previous item on the Cabarrus County Recovery Grants. I think that we have funding available for up to 500 applications. That, I think maybe Rodney said 300, and he sent a note correctly. So it would actually be 500 businesses that could take advantage of that. So we encourage people to fill out that application. And so now we'll move to Item G7 from the Sheriff's Office, Acceptance of the Bike Safe Grant Award. And we are happy to have Aaron Rankin with us to talk about that item. Welcome.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, Chief, just real quick, I wanted to introduce each of these two grants. The first grant is a Bike Safe Grant. If you'll recall, back last year about this time, we brought forward with a grant application for the Bike Safe Grant. And I did probably a yeoman's job in describing exactly what the Bike Safe program does. So I brought the administrator this grant and the upcoming grant that you'll be hearing about, Captain Aaron Rankin, and just give you a brief synopsis of what the Bike Safe Grant allows us to do.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Commissioners. It's always good to see you, especially this time of year, because we get to bring back to you a continuation of the grants that you have helped us with and have supported us with. The Bike Safe North Carolina Grant is a Governor Highway Safety, fully federally funded grant where we receive monies to put on these classes for free for the public. Now, these are motorcycle safety classes. We offer them typically about once a month. They are offered in numerous counties throughout the state. And folks can go to bikesafenc.com to sign up for free. It is the only motorcycle safety program in the country that does an on-road evaluation of your riding. So you spend a day with us. We talk about some safety parts of motorcycling, but then we actually go out on two separate rides, and we monitor how the and we monitor how the folks operate their motorcycles, give them constructive feedback, and just have a real good relationship and time together to build that relationship between us and our riders and make a safer roads for everybody. And I have some stats here, if I can get my screen to share. And we will go with that to just show you where we are with the Bike Safe program. And I will get that going here shortly. There we go. Now, I hope the Bike Safe screen is what popped up on your screen.
It has not popped up on our screen.
Let's see, let me click it here. And if you're not seeing that yet...
We do see it.
Okay, great. So are you seeing the one that says Bike Safe?
We're seeing Traffic Enforcement and Education Unit.
Let's try that, how about that?
Yes, sir, we have.
Okay, so we're getting there. All right, so the website is up top, I like to post that again. This is absolutely class sponsored through the Governor's Highway Safety Program and the grant. We started the Bike Safe class in 2015, and Cabarrus County Sheriff's Office alone has had 245 students come through the program. During this current grant year, which runs October 1 until September, but October 1 through August, we've had 39 students. We have hosted six classes, and we've assisted other agencies throughout the state on eight different classes. So we are the grant manager for the Metro Region 6. Our county was selected because of our obvious active role in the Bike Safe program. And you can see there the nine counties that are represented under Region 6, that this grant helps to support them through training and hosting their classes and other things. So we, again, we appreciate your support, and we are bringing this to you again. This would be our fifth year running the grant. And we appreciate your support in continuing this grant.
And might I add for the board, this is a $5,000 grant with no county match for the Bike Safe.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Captain Rankin or Chief Bailey? Okay, I just wanted to add, I mean, it's really, there's some pretty impressive statistics and the fact that Cabarrus County is the leader for these nine counties that you see on the screen. I think that most folks think about our law enforcement agencies, and they think about all the normal things that you do every day as far as traffic safety and investigating issues and answering complaints and things of that nature. I don't think that they realize just how far above and beyond all you folks go every day on the safety aspect of our roads and our community. And so hats off to you and the entire agency for the excellent job that you do on this program. It is very obvious that people across the state recognize the excellent job that you do, or you would not be chosen to take on this responsibility for that entire region. So we appreciate, you make us proud every day, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Okay, if not, at this time, I would entertain a motion to accept the grant award and to adopt the associated budget amendment and resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Okay, that is a motion by Commissioner Shu, a second by Commissioner Honeycutt. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, please say no. And that motion passes. We move now to item G8, acceptance of the Governor's Highway Safety Program Grant Award. Gentlemen, who goes first?
I'll introduce it and then again, turn it over to Captain Rankin. So again, this grant was brought to this board last year. The grant at that time was a 70-30 split, with the state funding providing 70% of the grant. County was a county match of 30%. The second year of this grant, that number goes down on the state side, and the county match goes up. So this grant award is for 102,217, with a county match of a total number of 102,217. And again, this is for the Governor's Highway Safety Program Traffic and Education Enforcement Team that we currently have in place at the sheriff's office. I'm going to let Captain Rankin again get started with killing you with stats.
All right, thank you, chief. So again, thank you so much for supporting these grants and for supporting the Traffic Enforcement Education Unit. We are entering our third year of this grant, and I wanted to just share some stats from the current year and just show you how these guys are doing. Now, just a reminder, there's only two officers assigned to this grant, and their sole thing in life when they come to work is through Traffic Enforcement and Education. Just to give you a little feedback on the education part, in our first year before COVID hit, and in our schools, obviously, we're not having any students in it. We were able to partner with another program through the Cabarrus Health Alliance to bring a speaker in and speak at our high schools about distracted driving. We were able to reach a large number of students that way. And we are actually going to pick that back up now that school's back in and continue with that, hopefully, with some hands-on distracted driving exercises, just to show that part of it. But just to share some stats from this year, we'll try the share screen thing again here, and there we go. Hopefully, you can have the traffic enforcement screen there. And so this year, from October 1st, again, our grants run on the federal fiscal year, so they start October 1st. The two guys have been very busy. If you see on the right-hand side of your screen, they've had 2,005 calls for service, but 1,991 of those were self-initiated. It is, they don't answer a lot of calls for service. They are out there, of course, to, as needed, but their jobs are to do things on their own and get things going. They had 1,672 traffic stops. From those stops, there were 1,415 citations, equalling 1,826 charges. You can see there were 273 seatbelt violations, 695 speed violations, and then 858 of different violations there that were cited. Most of our communities, as we go, obviously, traffic is of great concern, keeping our roads safe, and that's what these guys are out there doing. A lot of this is working inside those communities and helping as needed. So they do a lot of work, they work very hard, and we appreciate the support. And we get a lot of great feedback from the community to be able to answer their needs and calls and to work with the young drivers out there to ultimately... The ultimate job of these guys is through enforcement and education, is to reduce crashes, making our streets safer and saving lives.
Absolutely, and again, there's not a lack of speeding complaints in the county. These guys, these two guys are the first ones that we send out to problem areas. Captain Rankin also keeps track of intersections where we have our largest majority of our crashes are at specific intersections. So he'll send them out as well to work those intersections. So they stay very busy. But we feel like this grant is worthwhile, we feel like this grant should be continued, and we are looking to get support for this grant.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have questions for Captain Rankin or Chief Bailey? Thank you very much. I think this very clearly demonstrates when we have an opportunity to match a grant where half of the cost is being picked up. And then also, as you mentioned in your presentation, Captain Rankin, y'all have been able to partner with other county agencies like the Cabarrus Health Alliance. And that's how we really get, I think, the big bang for the buck. And so we appreciate those efforts, and I think every taxpayer in Cabarrus County should appreciate the way that you're able to multiply those funds and get the best benefit from it. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to accept the Governor's Highway Safety Program Grant Award and to adopt the associated budget amendment and resolution.
So moved.
Okay, that was a motion by Commissioner Kiger, and I did not get the second on that.
That was me.
A second by Commissioner Strang. Any further discussion or comments? If not, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, please say no. And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen, we appreciate you being with us tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our new business on our agenda tonight. So we move now to reports. And at this time, we will receive updates from commission members who serve as liaisons to municipalities or on various boards or committees. Does anyone have updates tonight? Okay, hearing none, we will move to general reports from any commissioner members, if you have anything there. Okay, hearing no additional reports or general comments. We do have need of a closed session tonight. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss matters related to pending litigation and economic development as authorized by North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A3 and 4.
I'm moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Honeycutt, a second by Commissioner Shu, that we go into closed session. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, please say no. That motion passes, and we are now in closed session. I want to thank everyone for joining us on this meeting tonight. And as commission members are familiar, we will log out and then log back into our closed session. Thank you all, and good night.